Hold the meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Suh?
President.
Mr. Delio?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. O'Beige is absent. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Marra?
Here.
Notice that this meeting is provided to the Burnersville News Courier-News Star Ledger, filed with the Minister of Clerk, posted on the Municipal Ballotin Board on December 12th, 2017. Please authorize for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're going to start with presentations. We have a joyous occasion this evening, so we're going to have our oath of office for Sergeant Brian Kelly, done publicly. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I would like to present Sergeant Brian Kelly, here tonight to take his formal oath of office. He's been serving in the rank of sergeant now for approximately one month, and everything's working out great so far. I'm happy to report he's going to be a great addition to our supervisory staff at the Police Department. Brian's been a police officer with the Burnersville Police Department for 22 years. He served the last seven years in the Detective Bureau, and he also does, serves as emergency management coordinator, deputy emergency management coordinator for the Office of Emergency Management at the Police Department. He's also our IT technical coordinator for the Police Department as well. So, congratulations, Brian. And I know you've got someone to come up and pull by the... Okay, I'll go.
I, Brian Kelly, do solemnly swear...
I, Brian Kelly, do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And in this state under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all the duties of sergeant.
Perform all the duties of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
That I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain, favor, or advantage.
Nor to seek personal gain, favor, or advantage.
Not available to the general public so help be God.
Not available to the general public so help be God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Go. Brother, thank you, sir. Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Brian. All right, our next item, 4B, Casa Shaw, a request for their website on a borough website. Representative?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Heisler, the executive director for Casa of Somerset, Hardin, and Warren Counties. I brought you guys some brochures if you're not familiar with what we are and what we do. Casa is a nonprofit, star rick Somerset, Hardin, and Warren County that recruits, screens, trains, and supervises community volunteers. The act is advocates in court on behalf of kids who've been abused, neglected, and are living in a foster care system. We are in an expansion phase. Right now, we are serving 100% of kids in Hardin, but only 50% here in Somerset and 31% in Warren. So, we need new advocates. So, one of the things that we are going around and we're asking municipalities and townships to consider is a link on your website to our webpage so that when people log into their communities to see what's available for them to do, that there's a place for volunteerism. And we ask you to consider that Casa will be one of the places.
Council members, any questions?
No. I think it's good of you.
John?
No.
Jeff?
No. Jack is, this is something...
Michael?
We're serving, last year we served 220 kids here in our community. Kind of give you an idea of the scope. There's about 500 kids a year that end up in foster care in tri-counties. And we want to be able to provide an advocate for each one of them, not just the lucky ones who are...
Does the county engage your group too, at the county level, or...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we receive state funding through the legislature as well, and we're recipients of Somerset County Community Development Block grant. But we work very closely with the Office of Youth Services and the decent community.
You said tri-county. What other counties?
Hardin and Warren.
It's on the front, Joe.
Is it? Yeah. Does legal services, do you work with them?
Sorry.
Yeah, the Procaro and Terry Verdo and...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
In order to, if you're having legal issues to write?
No, if we ever had any legal issues, we would go to the pro-vote department, which would have a memorandum of understanding with them.
Okay.
Good.
Everyone in favor?
I'll put it on.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm grateful.
Opposed?
Nope.
Abstained? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. There you go. That was easy, huh?
That was a hard ask, yeah.
Thank you for all that you did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too, thank you very much. All right, approval of minutes, June 25th, 2018. Mrs. Delio and Mr. Sullivan are absent. Any changes in the minutes? Alterations? I'm going to motion move by Mr. Schmidt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Marra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I'm also an aye, too, yes. You can ask you guys to vote. You can vote even though you weren't here.
I'll abstain.
If they'd like.
Yeah, Sam, I didn't look at it.
All right. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting to permit opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy, an email copy, to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Oppose the opening session?
I don't know. Was that something from agenda, maybe? I'm just trying to help you get it.
Okay.
Kevin, I was going to raise, we got this email from Ryan Orpheus.
Yes.
I think we should read it into the record. I guess the macro question is, everybody got it? I mean, can I hear Anthony just to make it part of the message?
Sure. I think Anthony has a copy already, too.
The big question is, what's, what's the plan? Is there, is there a plan to assist this guy?
Well, the chief's not here right now. That would be key to his complaint on that. But be further with that. So, that would be part of the plan, because he went to the police, he indicated in the previous email, and didn't get the response he wanted, so...
Has Evan studied before? I mean, imagine it, you know?
I've looked at it a couple times.
I mean, what could we do short of running foul, you know, state and federal and...
That's what, whatever the police are doing. Here's, here's the chief, he's back. Michael asks a question.
Chief, we got an email, you may have seen it, from Ryan Orpheus.
Tom?
Tom? Tom? I haven't, I haven't seen it. In any event, he's, he's concerned about dropping his wife off at the train station, having to walk through. They qualified him as day laborers, and that he felt it was very uncomfortable having his wife walk through. And ironically, I got a call from another guy whose daughter is interning in the city, and he was dropping her off in the morning, and he was very uncomfortable. And I guess the macro question is, what, what can be done? And I, quite frankly, I think it's unfair to dump it on you. I think, you know, what, what's council doing?
Well, he did indicate there was police service there, but he didn't, you know...
Well, have there been any complaints about, I mean, other than feeling uncomfortable? Have they been approached at all?
His quote is actually, "She feels so unsafe at the train station." That's what he asked her in the email.
Well, I mean, at first, I was strongly, nobody's contacted us with regards to this email that I'm aware of. So, my first response would be, whoever, you can give me a copy of the email, I'll have somebody reach out to them and set up an appointment to discuss his concerns, and find out specifically what, you know, what his concerns are and what, what problems he's seen that maybe we're not aware of that we can address. We may not be able to address it if there's no violations taking place of any...
That's what I'm saying.
Ordinances or laws, you know, we're very limited as to, you know, what we can do about, you know, people's right to assemble, right to free speech. Now, it's been very clear that isn't there's a transit train station. I mean, they have our liberal policies regarding these types of activities as well on most of their properties. So, you know, we spend an enormous amount of time there at the train station, monitoring activities there. We're there most every morning. We're there throughout the day. We have walking patrols, we have static controls, we have, you know, installed security cameras in the area that we observe 24/7. And I think we're, you know, we don't have any incidents of any reported crimes really occurring there that we're aware of. So, we'd love to meet with the mayor's concerns.
Mr. Orpheus says it here, loitering is a crime, if that's not true.
Exactly.
That was my question. Do, do ordinances extend to like property like that, or is it preempted by, you know, something else?
Yeah, those kind of ordinances are preempted by state law, that's just legal, and really loiter and ordinances are overturned every time...
What about solicitation? That's basically, it is to, you know, is done, like, transactive business, basically. Is there anything that would govern that?
Right. Against the activities that make people feel uncomfortable.
Can we, can we move them, say, to the parking lot here, down below?
It's, it's public property. They have a way to assemble public property, as long as they're not interfering with traffic obstructing pedestrian access. You know, we do go through there from time to time again and tell, ask them to move off the sidewalks, try to move them to an area where there's a little bit more room for them to congregate, but we cannot be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they tend to migrate back to areas that they like to hang out. But as I said before, we don't have any documented history of complaints recurring at that, at that location right now that I'm aware of. I could go back and look and see, but we just really, we spend a lot of time there at this right now.
This has come up before, yes.
Yes.
Our hands are very much that. The less they commit...
Right.
So, you have Mr. and Mrs. commuter going to New York. They feel very uncomfortable. They pay $10,000, $12,000 dollars a year property taxes, and they, and anybody who's walked, and all you guys have walked, one of the first things that people say is, hey, when I commute to the city, or when my daughter comes to the city, is there anything you can do? So, maybe we need to contact the press news office and see if they can assist us.
Well, my son takes that train, too, and, I mean, he's 15. I don't, I don't feel the same fear, but I guess you can't control how people feel about it. And as Jack said, loitering isn't really a crime, so there's no, no crimes occurring to me. I mean, I don't know what basis you would have for that.
Again, I would suggest if you would meet with somebody from the Police Department, you can find out specifically what his concerns are. Maybe there's something that's not being articulated here that we can address. You know, we're talking generally right now, you know, based on what I hear for the first time from, from this email. I've heard those complaints before, and we've addressed them with increased police presence and trying to be visible in the area. And we've taken proactive measures to make sure that the train station is as safe as it possibly can be. And beyond that, then any overt violations of the law, there's not really a lot more that the Police Department can do about it, except work proactively to try to deal with some of these issues. We need to do it very carefully, because we don't want to put ourselves in a position in the borough, in a position where we're inadvertently violating somebody's civil rights that could create an obligation for the borough that I think we would like to avoid if at all possible. But more importantly, I think we'd like to treat everybody fairly and make everybody feel as safe as possible, which is most important in my mind.
That's good to know that there's cameras there, too. I mean...
And they're monitored constantly by our communications staff in the Police Department. It's not something that we want to go to when there's a problem.
Right.
Anything else?
Anything else, Mike?
I've said my piece.
Okay, anyone else?
We get Tom from the way that he says...
Tom, you want to, Tom, you have to, you have to leave early.
Are you sure you want to get back to your business this time of year? You want to come up and say what you have to say?
Oh, would you like me to?
Yes, please.
Sure, okay.
We're just going to move one item of our business.
Come on, come up to the microphone here.
Oh, for you, okay.
It's your time of year. I don't want to keep you here while you could be selling ice cream.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, my name is...
Tom, just state your name and address for the record.
My, my name is Tom Ock. My family and I live at 30 Chestnut Avenue. We've been there for nine years this October, and we're also the proud owners of Penguin Ice Cream at 3 Claremont. And I just wanted to stop by and, and thank the council for the ordinance that is being put forward with regards to updating perhaps the, the parking conditions from, from two hours to 30 minutes. I personally believe that this will be a tremendous benefit to, to all of the, I think to all the small business establishments on Claremont. If you take a look at us over there, we're basically, we're all grab-and-go kind of establishment. So, anyway, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Zemara. I had reached out to you a few months or so ago, and I'm, I'm actually elated that in terms of the progress here. So, I just want to express my appreciation and thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, ordinances. Mayor to open a public hearing, ordinance 181774, appropriated in $12,500 from the Capital Fund Reserve for a mitigation project. Anyone in a public hearing? No one in the public, council members? All right. Mayor to close the public hearing. Motion to pass on final reading is published. Have a motion? Moved by Mr. Schmidt. Slipped by Mr. Donahue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Marra?
Yes.
All right, open a public hearing, ordinance 181775 concerning parking regulations on Claremont Road and amending Chapter 7 of the Borough Code entitled Traffic. Public hearings open. Anybody who's been in public, we heard from Mr. Ock already. Anyone else? Council members?
Nope.
Okay, and to close the public hearing, motion to pass on final reading is published. Have a motion? Moved by Ms. Marra. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Delio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marra?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
All right, entertaining motion to move that ordinance 181776, an ordinance providing for improvement of Anderson Hill Road by the Borough of Burnersville, County of Somerset, New Jersey, and making an appropriation of $250,000, therefore constituting proceeds of a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. And that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM Monday, August 13th, 2018. Have a motion? Moved by Ms. Marra. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. Entertaining motion, move that ordinance 181777, an ordinance establishing procedural rules for borough advisory committees and supplementing and amending Chapter 2 of the Borough Code entitled Administration, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. And that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM on Monday, August 13th, 2018. Have a motion? Move by Mr. Delio. You want a second, John?
Yeah, sure.
Second by Mr. Donahue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it. All right, we have resolutions, 18165 to 18173. Any questions from any council members or comments on it? You want to pull any?
Whose was the inactive ABC license? I didn't read it.
It's in the package.
That was JDJ General Store.
Where's that?
That was, we've been holding it store...
Oh, they had a liquor license?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had it for a long time.
Oh. I wonder why they didn't recognize it.
It's the coldest beer in town.
Is that right?
And it's made in Blackwater.
There you go. Any others?
That was the only question I had, yeah.
Anyone else? No? All right, entertaining motion to move, resolutions 18165 to 18173. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt. Do I have a second?
I'll abstain.
Seconded by Mr. Delio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Marra?
Yes.
So, who's going in there now? It's going to sell booze.
Well, they can move it around.
Oh, okay.
They put it, so they just reactivate it.
Okay. In downtown, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Don't have to first apply for a...
They have to apply to move it, yes, but yeah. But they activate it first, on the shore, whoever activated it is moving it.
But it's just packaged goods, right?
Yeah.
Is it just beer and wine, right? No hard liquor?
No, I think it's full.
It's just, yeah, it's inactive right now, so they would have to activate it in order to use it again, so they're not willing to use anything except anything right now. They're just keeping it so that they have it.
Keep it inactive, yeah.
Keep it, yeah.
All right, item number nine, reports. Reports to Municipal Attorney. Any questions for Jack? Please report.
No.
I seen none. I'd be counsel public safety committee.
No, no, it's in the report right now. I did not, yeah, I know, but I didn't go through everything. If I can hold off on that till the next meeting, I've been tied up, so we should have a meeting planned at some point. Christine, you're pretty available? Yeah, rather than go through this unprepared, I'd rather hold off the next week, or next, uh, next meeting.
If we can follow up on some things that came up at the last meeting, Chris?
Yeah, absolutely.
Traffic things?
Yeah, sure.
So, at the last meeting, Council expressed some concerns from various different members about Burners Avenue, and some of the speed complaints that were being received regarding vehicle speed and truck traffic on Burners Avenue. Since that time, we've conducted a traffic survey, speed survey, using some equipment that we have. We've collected those results now, and we're in the process of analyzing the results of that speed survey to help us indicate when we should do areas of increased enforcement. I can say right now that the results that I've seen so far do not indicate a significant speeding problem on that street, but there is a rather high volume of cars. I was surprised at the number of cars that were traveling on that street. You know, if you're going a few miles an hour or 25 mile an hour speed limit, it seems like you're going a lot faster when you're walking along that road. So, some of our problem might be perception, although there are some cars that are exceeding the speed limit. So, we're going to be looking at some increased enforcement in that area. We're already beginning to survey the signs in that area to see if we can do some more increased sign visibility with some of the signs that's, that's there. There's some different signs out there that we feel that might be able to slow people down. And we've also today put out the electronic sign board trailer with the speed indicator on it to help slow people down through Burners Avenue. So, you know, we're taking a look at it, we'll make some improvements as we go along. And Burners Avenue is one of those areas that's been designated as a possible site for the permanent electronic speed display signs to be installed in an effort to try to slow people down, making aware how fast they're actually going. Other than that, we just encourage residents to call us when they, when they see complaints from when they feel that there's excessive speeds that are taking place or increase volume of traffic on the roadway. We'll respond to their call for service at that time and try to go up and slow some people down. The other thing that we were talking about at the last council meeting was a crosswalk on Route 202, that we have an agreement in place with DOT, we have a request in place with DOT to put a crosswalk in at Depot Place in 202 on the, on the south side of the train station, that's the west side of the train station. So, they've received that, they have it in their files. It's tentatively been approved, but due to a reorganization in DOT, there's been some paperwork shuffle, and their backlogs are getting pretty, pretty long right now. We're on their list, they're trying to bump it up in their priorities. They've asked us for some more documentation that we've already provided them with at one time, it's going to be from the end. We're going to request, and hopefully at some point in the near future, there will be a crosswalk at Depot Place at this side of the train station to help with crossing the pedestrians to the karate school and those restaurants and businesses that are on the side of the street across from the train station as well. I do want to remind council that we discussed previously that the possibility that we may lose one or two parking spaces along 202 to accommodate a crosswalk due to state regulations for site clearance and distance, you know, from crosswalks as to where vehicles can park. And DOT had originally expressed that that would be done at our expense. Once the crosswalk was laid down, we would have to reposition those to strike me for those spots. I told the county down about that, and even seemed to think that that would be a problem for us and not create significant expense. But now it looks like DOT might actually be doing whole project, we're waiting to hear back from that, so that would be good if they could do it all. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed on that as well. And then also with regards to state DOT, there was discussion at the last council meeting regarding the electronic sign board up at the old library as we were coming to Old Town Square. We put an electronic sign board up here to prohibit, to advise trucks that they're not supposed to be using Anderson Road, that there's a truck route in place, there's a weight limit on Anderson Road. State does have plans to put permanent signs in at that location. Again, due to their backlog, they have not been installed. They have called for the utility markouts, and that request has been bumped up on their listed priorities as well, so we're still waiting for the state to install the assignment. And it could be more of a permanent solution to advise the trucks to stay off of Anderson Road and follow the posted truck numbers. Road and follow the posted truck numbers. County signs are in place and they've been there for a couple of months now, and I think that they are helping as well, they seem to be adequate as far as I can see as well. Um, I think that's about it, the chair is over from the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
One, one thing I want to add, this, this really doesn't fall into public safety so much, but I had gotten a voicemail from three residents, um, one from Overly, one on Robin, one on Dryden, they kind of made like a conference call to my voicemail. And they asked about the physical appearance of the paper that's hanging in the dry, um, Mastro Shoes, the brown paper, that's hanging in there and kind of saying of how it, the appearance is. And I said I'd bring it up and ask about it, but is that something that they put up on their own?
Yeah, if I might, as a, they had nothing over the windows at all, it was just stacks of shoes, shoe boxes.
Right.
So we asked them to cut out the paper while they did repairs, whatever they were doing inside buildings. Sounds like it's time to revisit the paper.
Yeah, yeah, so they were, you know, they weren't, you know, set, but they're like, you know, kind of looks shabby, why is it allowed? Is there anything to be done about it? So I just, I mentioned I'd bring it up. All right, thanks, Jeff.
If I, if I can just say, you know, as, as we go through these complaints, like these emails and these phone calls that council gets, this, this is nothing new, this, this goes on as part of your responsibility to the community to be responsible for these kinds of inquiries, but it would be very helpful, I think, to us and ultimately informative for you if, when you get those inquiries, or if you get an email or a phone call, that you either personally contact us with the information so that either the police department or code enforcement or even DPW for some of the complaints, can contact them directly, find out what the complaints are, explain to them what has been done, what we are, what we're doing, and, you know, find out how we can help them if, if it's something that we're not aware of, so that when you come to a council meeting, we, we actually have information for you and we're not hearing about it, you know, for the first time. Uh, it would just be helpful to us and I think, you know, better for you to be more informed. So we're more than happy to do that, we do it all the time, you know, we, we get, we hear secondhand about something, we do reach out to people on a regular basis, I know my department does, I think you'll be able to do as well, but, you know, when you bring this up, you know, for the first time at a public meeting, we would be in a much better position to be able to provide you with answers, more information, and be better prepared to deal with the topic that you're discussing.
Sure. It makes sense, I don't normally see Jeff here, so that's why I brought it up now.
No, that's fine, I mean, it's perfectly well within your, your responsibilities to do that, but I'm just saying, I think we maybe serve the community better if we had some advanced notice on some of these.
Sure, well, I agree. What, speaking of, of wardens and things like that, um, what, what is, what is our rulings for having displays on the sidewalks? Stores sometimes put things out there for sales, and I know the karate store has that blow-inflatable karate guy, is there anything that...
Apparently the karate guy puts that out on the weekends. So, um, there's also pink flamingo that's out further down Morris Town Road.
Okay.
Difficult items to regulate.
Okay.
If they're in the travel way, you know, in, in the sidewalk, and they're interfering with pedestrian traffic, then that is an issue. So I don't specifically know where he's putting this blow up.
It's near the door, the entrance, and, um, the other one that someone asked me about in ShopRite was, um, I think tons of toys puts, you know, little things they're trying to sell out on the sidewalk, on that little corner, and sometimes, I don't know if this woman was telling me that it was because it didn't look right, or because it was in the way, or blocked people from walking, she wasn't being very specific, so.
Yeah, there's a provision in the ordinance that you can display your merchandise under a roof, and one side of that building, the roof is over the doorway on one side. So it's a little gray, but they do have a foothold there to do that. The one good thing is that they're moving from that.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
So, doorway points on.
Okay. That was all I had.
All right.
Um, I have one, one more thing, Chief, about the old Army Trail crosswalk, which I know that Doug ordered a sign to mark the trail, but we, um, said that we could put a crosswalk of going from the Audubon to the trail, so...
So, Jack, we discussed that briefly after the last meeting, we need an ordinance, right, to, to a mid-block crosswalk?
Yes.
And I don't know if that's been prepared yet, or not, because the public safety hasn't backed, and I think it was going to be on the public safety agenda to get as well, but I don't see why we can't put the sign up.
No, we can.
And then just follow the crosswalk at some point.
Do we need to put up advanced signs like we do with any other, for the block of crosswalk?
We'll have to look at the, if you guys are going to follow the... I believe that's, that's a crosswalk. Put some signs to the...
And I have one more general question, speed bumps, a lot of people ask about can they have a speed bump on their shoes?
You can do anything you want, with the council.
But as far as...
On our local streets, not on state level.
Right, so that's, like, obviously, um, two or three, that just...
Everybody wants one, there's another person that doesn't want one.
Yes.
So, you know, my, my, my general response to that is let's, let's exhaust all of our other possibilities and, and avenues that we have available to us to try to address the speeding concerns, and then as a last resort, if it appears that there is in fact a significant safety concern, then the speed bump or a speed hump or a speed table would become a possible option, as well as, I believe, Jack, four-way stops are even permissible now with the inherent warrants as well. So there are other options that we can go to before we install speed bumps.
And if it's a crosswalk that's not mid-block, does that require ordinance too?
It depends, well, it depends where we are, because under, well, correct me if I'm wrong, in understate statute, there are implied crosswalks at intersecting streets and intersections, and, um, I don't believe you have to have an ordinance for, for every crosswalk. I don't know, Jack, do we need an ordinance to back that up?
I think we do, Karen, but if there's a speed issue to be...
Well, we can...
We have, we have ordinances in place for all of our crosswalks, the school crosswalks as of this right now.
It's easier to enforce than we're not.
Christine, a caution that my plows will absolutely destroy the speed bump that you put in the road. Speed humps, you will be put, put in series, multiples of them to be effective. In many towns that put the speed humps in, they're taking them away because of resident complaints about the noise at night of vehicles driving over the speed humps, so just something to consider. I was going to add that before you said, you know, everybody wants a speed hump or bump, but not in front of their house. That's what went to Woodall Cut, everybody wanted one, but not in front of their house. Anything else?
One of the things on public safety too that is outstanding is, we did have a request that goes back some time for a speed limit reduction on Anderson Hill Road to move it from a thirty-five to a twenty-five, um, as it, as we come down the hill towards the center of town. And we did have, um, some correspondence with an engineering firm about doing some work to give us the traffic warrants that are required to get this state-approved speed limit reduction that we need to do. Um, I just wanted to put that on our agenda for next public safety meeting because there's a loss associated with that, and I think helps slow vehicles down on Anderson Hill Road through a post-dab speed limit reduction back up the hill further.
So coming down, it was supposed to be, from my memory, from Sycamore Hill Road down?
Yeah, approximately, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's from thirty-five to twenty-five, because that hill and those curves are thirty-five miles an hour.
Yeah.
Not twenty-five.
Right, right, okay.
Anyone else? All right, nine C, um, finance personnel.
We have an update, right, Rob?
No, we're working on some, some financial issues, committee, and, um, we'll have, I believe you'll have something for your end, I don't know, this is...
Yeah.
Any questions for anyone? None. Nine D, Council Engineering Technology and Public Works?
John, you want to just give us a, we didn't have a meeting this month, a short update on, especially to My Mount Road?
Yeah, very quickly, you know, we're, we're waiting for the contractor to get his precast in to begin My Mount Road. He's indicated that's probably going to be in July, July eighteenth. We have applications down at NJ DOT for Hill Hill Road and Anderson Hill Road that we're getting DOT grants for. They've promised for our expedited review of those, so we can get those out to big. And just approved the resolution awarding the contract for the wastewater treatment plant filter replacement. Um, we had five bidders, we're about two hundred thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate, so very good pricing on that. Some of it is because of the manufacturer of the filter that the spec was designed towards really wants to be in this location, so he dropped his price quite a bit. So, we hope to, when we get contracts out, long lead time, about five or six months on the filters themselves, so we may not see real activity until the winter.
So it just goes, they're all custom fit, custom made?
Anyone else?
That's it.
And we're going to have a meeting this Thursday, six thirty.
Thursday, yes.
All right, nine E, any other committee or commission reports?
Doug, do you have anything for us for facilities part?
Uh, just, um, we're moving ahead with the generator to the lower library, the feasibility study, now we're calling for mark outs, and they initially put a little one to do that. The feasibility study is done, and, um, I'll sit at the back of that.
We'll have more information next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, on nine E, other committee and commission reports, anyone? HPA, three team.
I got an email, one and a housing meeting on Thursday, so we move to the mornings, Thursday morning here.
Okay. Ralph, the room available, Thursday mornings?
I'm sure, I'm sure.
The shade tree meet on Thursday?
But they're...
But they're out over, over the...
They're over at the, at the library, I believe, that, that they meet, I think they're at the conference room, should be fine.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, the shade tree meets and zoning office.
Yeah, yeah, this one, yeah, yeah, I don't think there's anything going on.
So housing's in the morning?
That, that's what my email said, yeah.
Who'd it come?
Chair.
Okay. Did you check with everybody, are you sure?
I don't, I'm assuming so, because I just got it asking if I was available.
Okay. Okay. We have a rec meeting tomorrow night, so we'll update for next month.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone else?
Based on the, based on the ordinance we just passed...
Jack?
Can Cheryl go to rec meeting staff?
Is she a member? Bill, Jack.
Right?
The voter. Assistant, it says, too. Two votes.
Well, since we're council permission, so, council.
When are we, uh, vote on that when you're here?
I want to entertain a motion.
I'd like to, to move.
Jeff, I'd like to move to have Cheryl, Brandon, Neil, basketball. Attentive rec meetings, do I have a second?
Effective immediately.
Seconded by Mr. Donahue.
Well, the ordinance has been adopted, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, that was quick. Any other committee or commission reports?
Um, I can just add about HPA, that they're, they're going to be sending a letter to all residents with an update on all the progress that they're making, you know, they're, they're also planning a walking tour for the fall, um, and the historical house tour in December, so, that's about, I mean, they're working on a lot of stuff, but nothing yet in the immediate future.
Okay.
As far as events go.
Anyone else? Nope. All right, seeing none, on nine E, um, housing zoning report from zoning officer and zoning enforcement officer. Any questions for Jeff, or Jeff, you want to say anything?
Uh, no, the, the two reports are, um, one on enforcement and the other on the rental housing. I also had in a, a quarterly report, just a one-page, in front of this, that just shows you during April, May, June, um, total amount of inspections, passes and fails, and thirty-one notices of violation, which some of them went into summers, some of them were resolved before they got there.
Jeff, is that higher than usual? It seems kind of high, right?
Well, that's three months.
Three months, okay.
Yes, so, last, last quarter was, um, so, number thirty-one.
Okay.
So we're averaging ten NLPs a month. And then the bottom of the page is just revenue that's been collected by the two departments for six months.
Any progress in the tall grass violations?
Yes, yes, there are. Uh, we've been in contact with, um, we send notices out, and we've had conversations with two homeowners that are questioning why they have to do all this cutting. Now, when you got, when you got a lot that's a hundred by two hundred, fair enough, but if you got five, six, seven acres, where do you stop? And it's a discussion that Jack and I had a couple of years ago on, is the state statute solid enough to, to go after these people who have six acres of cutting to do? So we're in the process of working that one through.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to items of business, on ten A, Moraine Crest Park, which is right next to my house, come on up.
Hi, um, Tommy Fadens, open space. Uh, we walked Moraine Crest with Doug Walker. Um, he recommends that we do a survey, a wetlands delineation, and a topography.
Yes.
Um, it's really in a lot, it's going to take a lot more than we thought. Um, we can't tell where the neighbor's property ends and whether they're dumping on Moraine Crest. There's a lot of junk on Moraine Crest that's been dumped there. There's a lot of huge trees down, there's one big tree that's leaning on two little trees, that big root ball up, that we're going to have to start looking at stuff like that.
Okay.
But he thinks it would be about fifteen thousand dollars to do all three things, and then when we get that done, then we can sit down from an engineering standpoint and see what we can actually do in there.
I, I agree, because when I first moved there, they had a bridge that went over, that small waterway, and I used to walk through all the way to the other side.
Can't do that anymore.
The neighbor, I guess, broke it and it's gone.
We had to climb over a couple of big trees just to get partial.
No, the fifteen thousand, it could take down the tree also, with the one...
No, that's, that's something different.
This is just for the survey?
We're talking about just for the three surveys, the topography, the wetlands, and the actual survey of the property, so we can mark where our property is and where the residence's property is.
Now, that's great, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done there.
A tremendous amount of work that needs to be done in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that dump in there, and there's also a lot of trees and branches that fell.
What are they dumping?
They're all their own clippings and stuff, and one section, there was a small mattress and this huge metal block of stuff.
Engine block in there, there's a bunch of stuff.
Engine block.
You know, nobody's been in there in so long that it's just a dumping room.
And it's an easy dump right off of Mount Airy, till you stop at night and you can just throw something in there.
So what's the goal for this property? What is the ultimate goal?
To do trails.
Is it enough room to do trails?
Yeah.
I used to walk through with my daughter all the time.
I mean, it was nice, because it connects neighborhoods, it connects to the sidewalk that comes up, uh, Mount Airy Road, so, you know, in, in the future, it, you know, it would make sense down the line, but, you know, we could start somewhere.
And one thing we could do now is if we could trim the small area along Mount Airy Road and maybe put wood chips in it.
Thank you.
I saw a lady walking a baby carriage today down Mount Airy Road, that's scary.
Yeah.
If we could at least do a two or three foot access, if we could just clear off that, put down wood chips and make it at least sort of a sidewalk, walk down Mount Airy.
I mean, as, as a long-term proposition, would it make sense to start the process, talk to the county about extending the sidewalks, at least? We've had that discussion, all right, they're not paying for sidewalks. They're not? Very clear.
Yeah, we went through that when they did...
When they, when they did the, the roads and the walls, they weren't interested.
How much, how much actually would that add without of the job, I mean, just, you know, put in the hundred linero feet of sidewalks?
I don't know, John would...
If there's other problems, that's decided, there's all kinds of scum cabbage, we know there's wetlands that is there.
It's tremendous wetland, that's why you want the wetland...
Transition.
So how do we put trails through if this, wetlands will...
There's a lot of dry area, we can do trails.
It seems like a lot of money, fifteen thousand. Do we need... People just walk in naturally through it?
Well, it's the people in those neighborhoods that were asking for it.
Well, Jack, correct me, that would come out of open space money, right?
Yes.
So, yes.
We can't even begin to look at it until we have a survey, so, I mean, we got to start there, at least, and then we can sort of make the, you know, to me, it's, you know, it's a lot of money, but I think it at least gives us the information, actionable information, okay, here's what we're really looking at, otherwise you're speculating, but what can we get...
Even just a survey to see what land belongs to us and to stop...
And I say we want to mark it out, like we did with our ball fields and everything.
Wasn't that one, we did all the surveys?
No, no, we just hit the ball.
No, nobody imagined.
Yeah, yeah, facilities.
Swallow.
But that sounds good, because I used to use it all the time, now I can't.
Okay, so that's where we stand right now, but we can't do anything with Moraine Crest until all of that is done.
That sounds like a good recommendation, thank you.
What do we have for you then? We, uh...
Well, you have to decide if you want to do that.
Council members, we want to move forward with this proposal.
you know, but it's covered in, I guess, getting sandy or one of those storms.
Right.
But that clearing that long would be.
That part we could clear out, that's not a problem.
Yeah, so I'm thinking out loud here.
And there's one right on my side where I walk through, I look up all the time and get passed it fast, yeah, it's leaning.
See, they scare me.
It's not as big as the real big ones developing, so that's still.
Those, the leaning trees scare me, especially when the roof ball is up, because the kids are playing in that area.
If I don't show up at a meeting.
I'd wear my mask.
Thank you.
Rescue.
You gotta do an ordinance to appropriate.
Okay, all right. So do we wanna proceed with an ordinance?
I would support that.
Chris?
It's open space money?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't worry.
No. Michael?
Jack, did we buy this with open space or?
Three acres, fine.
This goes back fifty years as this purchase, this is not open space money that bought it.
I like to look, go when you have first.
It's on the roster.
It's on the roster of open spaces, but it was a book, it goes back to before open space money.
We could approve up to a certain amount, like not to exceed.
Sure, well, that's what we'll do, that's what we're gonna say, because we don't know what the specific numbers are, if it's gonna be fifteen thousand, twelve thousand.
Well, typically, you just, you need the survey first to see.
Well, yeah, that's what we wanna do.
Right, to see where the delineation is between.
Wetlands delineation.
We're looking to approve the survey, yeah, and just to start.
A TOPO would be later if you really needed that, so. Does it break down on the quote of what was what or just gave you a lump?
No, there was an estimate.
If you're out doing a survey, it might pay while the surveyors are there to go ahead and get some total.
Oh, really?
There might be some economies gained by doing it while they're.
Yeah.
Is fifteen thousand a real number or is it just?
That's just.
It's an estimate.
That's an estimate based on some stuff we've done in the past. It's a difficult site, heavily treed, it might cost a little bit more to give an acre a TOPO. We can certainly get prices from Ferraro and from our EPI or whatland.
So right now, we just need permission for Jack and Jeff to appropriate on.
Well, I'd take, all right, I mean, if it's gonna take this long, I mean, another week is on the thing, come back with a quote, you know, get a real quote. You know, that sounds like a pretty rough estimate, so.
Yeah, and I like to take a look at this.
Let's just get a quote.
Well, that's what.
Well, that's what basically we would basically do, you know, if we approved, you know, looking at it further.
Okay.
And then we'll get the quotes and come back to us.
Well, doesn't cost me any of the quotes. You should have approval of fifteen grand.
Sixteen acres.
No, we're not approving any monies right now, we're just approving to move forward.
So to move forward to get a quote? I have no problem with that, I have no problem.
All right. Is that your recommendation, move forward with your quote?
Why not?
John?
Yes.
Okay, everybody okay, Mike? So we don't have to do anything right now, we just have to go quotes, all right. Jeff, how are you with it?
I'm fine, I'm gonna take a look too and I'll let you know how they feel next.
All right, so.
It seems like a lot of money.
All right, so we're good with that, okay. Ten B, request for a plaque at Claremont Field in honor of Ron Nardone. I'm Ryan's here, Ryan Webber's grandson. We had a whole bunch of information in our package, so, and samples. Do you have any questions for Ryan or, he's the only family member here who complains from any council members?
I don't have any questions.
Just procedurally, how do we proceed? Because it's first to case under, I guess, the, I mean, to me, the logical thing is you go to committee, connect the recommendation, kind of hash it out versus kind of time, you know, the efficiency of time versus doing here, come back with a sort of a plan you agree on, you know, it seems to fit within what was passed, so.
Yeah, that procedure is the intent of the ordinance.
Yeah, so, and so we, I think we delegate it to a committee, you know, you could work with them and come up with something. I know you had some ideas already, I saw, but.
I thought we said when we did this, we were gonna bring everything to council, so we didn't have to use a committee, correct?
Well, we need to create a new committee.
I don't think we need to do that.
Delegator, refer it to the appropriate committee to study.
Sure, okay.
If I remember this, he was a town employee, are there any exceptions, exclusives as a town employee?
Well, he was an employee, but he was also a volunteer and a community volunteer. Ryan, you wanna highlight on that?
Yeah. I think for about the first twenty years, he was a volunteer and then he became the first recreation director of the firm itself. So you, there wasn't a position for that and then it was created, I think, for him, like I follow, so.
Anything else?
The way our, the new ordinance, does it, are there, does it apply consistently for everybody as opposed to being a municipal employee, is it differentiated?
Well, that's, we looked over, Jack, I hear.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically exclude.
About forty-five years altogether, I think, was the.
So whether, whether a municipal employee or a volunteer, it's all the same?
Well, I think Ron was both, I think it's nine in play.
But I'm just saying from our ordinance perspective, yeah, I don't think.
And it's, and it's, what we're looking for is a plaque and more, you know, and it's something the family's gonna pay for, so it kind of sits within, it's sort of, I guess, you know.
Black on a stone, near the field.
I mean, I guess my point about just hashing out, I mean, if we're okay with that, I mean, aesthetically, you know, where's it gonna go, what's exactly gonna look like?
Yeah, I could work with any.
You know, maybe one person.
Yeah, you could work with, then you would work with one of our employees, grounds and fields, like we'll work for recreation and our both, so.
So in the pictures, you have like pretty, you know, typical things.
Yeah, I have a couple pictures, we're very flexible, and I think someone suggested a sitting stone possibly, we kind of need to have, where, you know, if they're playing baseball, they could put their shoes on or watch the game or on the stone. So, and we implemented many of the programs that are still being used today, taught, I think Cheryl everything she knows to do. I've known Cheryl for long, since I was little.
All right, so council, you wanna make a decision tonight or you wanna send it to a committee? Again, choose the committee you wanna send it to, whether it be recreation, the recreation facility, or?
First, I'm okay with the idea of the request, but just hashing out the, exactly where, what's it gonna look like, I mean.
Well, that's something Doug would have to, Doug, you'd have to get involved in that, where it can go from a safety standpoint, if it's not in the way of anything.
Yeah, once we approve, you know, the actual act, then they could decide where it's gonna be and where it's safe to be and, you know, and everything else.
And it's only about the sender's, too.
Yeah, it was kind of tasteful and kind of.
It was very nice, yeah.
It's very classy, I thought.
Very nice. Anyone else?
I like the idea of a sitting stone because there's really not that much seating down there.
Yeah, yeah, I went down there and looked and it wasn't much, right? Somewhere near the dugout would be nice.
Yeah.
John, you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
Are you okay, any questions?
Yeah.
All right, Jack, will you vote tonight? Or do we need an ordinance or a resolution?
No, you could just vote on it, you could do a motion.
All right, entertain a motion. Item ten B, a request for a plaque at Claremont Field in honor of Ron Nardone.
Now, this require a public hearing, doesn't require a particular notice, so you're at a public meeting.
Okay.
To me, that could, because I need in.
So that satisfies it?
Yeah.
Move by a motion?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Donahue, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mara. Jack, roll call on this, or?
I would, yes, please.
All right, roll call, please, Anthony.
Mr. Villia?
Upstate.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the information you sent us.
Thank you very much, thank you for considering it, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ten C, farmer's market, I see an English in it back there.
Just one thing about the farmer's market is since Bedminster opened and most of us were caught, were blindsided by it, we saw in the newspaper, they, you know, they're on Saturday same time, and they have these two big banners across two oh two in two different places. Our farmers are saying, well, why can't we get that? And so that's why I'm trying to see if we can do that. They, one of the farmers has said it could increase their business forty percent. They're a little paranoid, there's another farmer's market down the road, but if we can do it, I think it would be great. If anyone has any questions, I could answer that, but.
And Jack, we had problems with that in the past, right? We had problems with banners across two oh two?
Well, I saw Ed's already been in touch with the state.
Yes, he said he was going to, he said Verizon was the difficulty and he said he had a contact there and he backed away from it. So I'm not quite sure where we are. I'm gonna stay on now unless someone has a contact to go to Verizon, which could take a little time.
Verizon's very difficult to be next year.
So Ed, where is the plan to put this banner?
There are two posts apparently, the banners that we put up before by the.
Yeah, I'll give you a little background, I'm sure Kevin, you remember this. We put the banners up there for the festival of sacred heart, it's a long stretch.
Yes, it is, sixty-six feet or something.
And the banners shrink down and there's no way of stretching them out. So the banner never really looked good in that spot.
It's too big.
It's, yeah, you need a huge banner to make it look decent, right, Kevin?
Well, I remember banners being across two oh two and they, over time, they were sad a little bit. The state ultimately did give permission for the banners to go up on a couple of different occasions.
And you'll need, we used to have the firemen, the assistants putting it up, I don't know if they'd still be able to do that.
What exact spot would you want, like where?
Well, certainly there are two posts that we've used before, so I don't know, the holes are still good currently.
Glenn might, Glenn might know what poles, do you put the bears, would you put the bears up in the past or you move off of that?
Yeah, there's actually two poles that I think the DOT actually has set to, have used, that have tie connections to them. I know they'll be getting permits every time we come in and it was for a specific length of time. Three weeks, three weeks, I think, is all it is, yeah. They wanna do it, if it's possible, I think, if it's good, we can go ahead.
Where?
I'm doing the paperwork now, I'll send it into Verizon and then I'll probably have to come back to some of you and find out where the pole is and so forth, if that's okay, and I think there's a lot of signatures.
We have a local ordinance, too.
I'm sorry.
We have a local ordinance, too.
Yes, yeah, that has to be first before DOT gets it.
Correct, okay, okay.
Absolutes running, sure, that's the word.
So where?
I think the zoning office is the one that has to sign off on it finally. So let me know, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think to go across the state highway, this is, county has to get involved or somebody.
Oh, yes, definitely.
One state.